Yeah, I'm on. Okay, yeah. I know, I would usually say testing, testing, but I said that and it it came through pretty clear, so I'm no need to test, test. Are you ready? Okay. All right, we're gonna call the Ways and Means Committee meeting to order. Today is June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, approximately five twenty-five P M. Um, tonight, we have two budget adjustments. Uh, both of them are coming from the uh, second budget adjustment, also from the COVID grant, is eighty-seven thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars, sixty-eight cents. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
All right, we entertain a motion?
I move to accept this budget adjustment.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept a budget adjustment for eighty-seven thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars, sixty-eight cents from the HHS COVID grant. We'll move these on to the full council for approval. Uh, will you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Ways and Means is adjourned.
Let me go ahead.
Okay. Um, next, we'll move over into uh, ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we have uh, four ordinances and we have one, two, three, four resolutions. Uh, we also have a resolution agenda. And this resolution, this is a resolution authorizing the extension of an agreement with Civic Plus concerning services for website development for the Parks and Recreation Department. So we will have to vote to add this to the agenda. Um, agenda item number one will be read for the first time, and we're going to send this over to the Administration Committee for uh, consideration. Uh, agenda item number two. Are we gonna read this once? Are we trying to finish it up tonight?
Second one.
Yes. It's closing a portion of East West Alley located north of the one eleven-hundred block, East Harding Avenue between Kentucky and Vermont Streets.
Do we have anybody proposing here? We need to read it twice at least.
Okay.
The ones here proposing.
All right, read twice.
We'll read twice.
We can read it twice, okay. All right, agenda item number three. Uh, it's an ordinance amending policy number one oh six of the Pine Bluff Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual respecting take-home vehicles and for related purposes up for the first reading.
Yes, let's read this one twice, three, twice too.
Okay.
You don't mind.
All right, any objections to that?
No, sir.
Okay, so we'll read that twice. Um, an ordinance authorizing issuance of short-term financing instrument pursuant to Amendment seventy-eight of Arkansas Constitution for the acquisition of equipment for the Street Department and the execution of the documents needed to complete the transactions and for related purposes up for the first reading. I know typically when we have these, we try to get these on through.
Yeah, let's read it, let's read it twice and bring it back again. It's it's a lot of paper to try to comprehend. We we happen to citizens too.
Right, well, uh, well.
This is a lot.
That's true. Mister Bennett is here, so um, I don't know the urgency on this. Where, is he back there? I know sometimes we have to go ahead and get things done.
Well, I, well, I know sometimes there's more, more in the background of this than just what's on the paper.
I understand.
Here are some people on the outside bringing us stuff to to run through, you cook on our, over our citizens.
Right, Mister Bennett, um, for agenda item number four, which is dealing with the Street Department, number seventy-eight, for the financing of the uh, short-term financing of the equipment. Is that something that we need to try to go ahead and get done?
We need to push it through. Uh, we are inundated with calls from our residents needing their ditch cleaned, needing their ditch mowed, and uh, various tasks. With the equipment that we are requesting to buy, we have fulfilled a lot of the tasks uh, to help us to move on. We are limp in the Street Department with our equipment. It's fix and repair daily. This uh, item here gives us opportunity to be a little stronger with our work effort.
Yes, sir.
Let, let's finish then.
Is it okay, Councilmember Mays? Let's try to go ahead and finish this.
All right.
That's, that's the effort mandatory.
Well, well, I mean. And then you got Shaner on the bottom of it. I mean, I, you know, really.
He's the chair of the, he's the Chair of Public Works.
I'm looking out for the people, but I, I, let's go ahead and do it. Let's go ahead. Thank you, Council.
Yes, sir.
I think we all looking out for.
That's a, that's a, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money that we're dealing with.
We all looking out for the people, Councilmember.
Yeah, I wonder sometime. Streets out there pretty bad.
Well, that's, this is an instrument to try to help us make them a little bit better. All righty, so we have those uh, ordinances, um, figured as far as how many times we're gonna read. And then we also have the uh, four resolutions that are there and the one added resolution to be completed tonight. Uh, let's see.
Now, you really got to explain this if last number nine on the resolution. It just came off the press ten minutes ago. Really? Really?
And we have to vote to add it to the agenda.
Go ahead, y'all go ahead.
So we, if we do that, uh, vote to add this to the agenda, it will be number nine. Okay. Do we have any other, um?
What are we voting on?
What was that? Did he say?
Okay. Cause I can't hear.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, uh, ordinances and resolutions is adjourned.
If I can have everyone's attention, it is five thirty-one. We call the Pine Bluff City Council Meeting to Order. It is June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. We will now have our invocation by Reverend Doctor Tisdale of Saint Luke A and E Episcopal Church. Everyone will now please stand.
Ain't no one over there? Got it.
Reverence to God and members of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. I want to take this opportunity to be able to pray for our city, for our leaders, because we need much prayer. So we can get God's guidance to lead us through whatever it is we going through. Because we, as the leaders, he instructed us over it. So Father, in the name of Jesus, I come boldly to your throne of grace, to obtain mercy and find grace to help in time of need. And we thank you for being our Father, being our Lord, being our King, and being our God. And thank you that we are your children. So we come to make our requests known unto you. We ask you to just use the leaders for your glory, rebuking by the instructions that's been coming to them in their spirit from the enemy. And we know that the devil is a liar and the father of lies. We want to see them operated in wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that you have given them by the Holy Spirit of God. Because we know that we are filled with your spirit. We are your children, and we ask you to have your way in our life. We thank you for the leaders. We thank you for them executing and doing what needs to be done for the citizens of Pine Bluff. Cause we need much work. Our children need much work. So therefore, we are asking you to use us for your glory and wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, being led by the Holy Ghost. And we thank you and we praise you for it right now, in the awesome name of Jesus. You said if we ask anything in your name, you would do it for us. So we are touching and agreeing and we are asking for your leadership, your guidance, your directions, in the name of Jesus. Do it for your glory, so everyone can rejoice and be happy as to what's going on in the city. And we touch and agree and believe our faith that is done right now. Use us for your glory. And all of the people in agreement said, amen, amen, and amen.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Doctor Tisdale, for that powerful prayer. We do have two public speakers speaking on agenda items. We have Miss Reverend Jesse Turner speaking on agenda item number four. And he's for agenda item number four. Reverend Jesse Turner. Reverend Jesse Turner. Mister Julius Lever speaking on agenda item number four, and he's for agenda item number four.
Good evening.
Mister Holcomb, this is our person in the audience. This is us of Pine Bluff. I'm speaking on number three. If you will, Mister Holcomb. I'm speaking on number three. And I will read real quickly. An ordinance amending policy number one oh six of the Pine Bluff Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual respecting take-home vehicles and for related purposes. Uh, I do notice that uh, we have one of the greatest chiefs of police we've ever had, Miss Denise Richardson. I watched, listened, and took notice of her behavior, of professional ethics, and I think that we are very blessed that someone from another city came here to be educated and then chose to stay in Pine Bluff rather than go to any of the fifty states of the United States of America. I want to say that I think in some cases that we have some old legacies of men wanting to dominate departments like the Police Department, and I believe in some cases they're not very accommodable to her in trying to put her agenda before the public. And if I'm wrong, please take notice of my being wrong. Now, this issue about take-home vehicles, I've tried to understand it. It's clear, it's clear to me and clear from what I've read across the country that when people take, when police officers take vehicles home, that it has a positive presence. The people in the community, they receive them wholeheartedly. I heard, I saw where it said, when you eat with people, you won't kill those people. And and so in some cases, some believe that living outside the city limits and being police officers and taking cars outside the city limits is a, not a positive thing. I am a little bit confused because in two thousand and fifteen, Glenn Brown was adamant against persons leaving the city limits uh, and being employees of the city. And so, uh, because of my respect of him, and seems like he's changed his position, I decided to be for this ordinance because he has changed his mind. But I would like to ask a question, and that is, Mister Brown, can you tell us why, you're a sponsor, if I remember correctly, why you changed your mind about? If I remember correctly, uh, this was, with two thousand and fifteen, you were talking a lot about residency requirements. And I understand, if I remember correctly, this ordinance, you are a sponsor or co-sponsor.
I'm the sponsor.
Uh, or Glenn Brown, can you, so can you explain to us, uh, Mister Brown, why you think? And remember, I, I have decided that I believe every human being should have equal rights in all capacities of life. And so although I was very hesitant to be for this ordinance, because I believe in, in civil rights for all persons, I've decided reluctantly so that I must be for this ordinance. But I would like to know why you feel so strongly about it.
Mister Lever, um, this is an issue that was brought up by our police chief. Uh, she expressed a concern for it. And so, um, I try to do everything in my power to support the Police Department and the chief. And she said this was something that we, uh, needed at the time, um, to retain officers, and so I am definitely for it.
Okay, very good. Well, I will say this, uh, in Chicago, they just said that they were going to do the same things, but and and they, they gave a cost of a vehicle, fifty-three thousand dollars. So I just wanted to say that I'm for it, but I think you should think it out and put some criteria with it. In other words, is it unlimited miles? Because i- it seems like to me if a car goes into another city adjacent to our own, it seems like it would be a crime deterrent in their city. But it's not a crime deterrent in our city, but our fifty-three thousand dollars is in another city. And so, as I said, I, I believe so much in civil rights, even sometimes when I'm straddling the fence, I have to come down on the side of civil rights. So I'd just like for you to, you all to ponder on it and see if you can get some restraints, because I know people take their children insurance. A person could have a wreck outside the city limits. It could be, and and I will say this, I remember, and I close by saying this. When I was at, the convention center was there, they, it became abandoned. But I noticed it was a vehicle outside the convention hotel every day. And that was a deterrent for people breaking in the hotel. So, uh, a car is very valuable, and the presence of that car is valuable, and I'd just like for you all to think about how you can make it work. Thank you.
Mister Lever.
We let him go with three minutes.
I, I know, I got, I have.
Councilmember Mays, we let him go over three minutes.
Mister Lever, I talked with Chief Richardson, and she's gonna keep a close watch on that. Now, you can help too, keep a close watch on that, cause they will get out of hand. And I'm, I'm gonna support it, but, but you can watch it as well as a citizen. Trust me. Now, thank you.
In the absence of Mayor, Mayor Washington, we have some announcements. City Council notes June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the city of Pine Bluff stepping the summer walking challenge. Join us in challenging yourself to walk or run the Saracens Walking Trail. This will be Saturday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, from nine eight A M. to eleven A M. The location will be Saracens Walking Trail at Saracens Pavilion. The address is two hundred Saracens Lake Drive. Members will be awarded based on the number of miles completed. Farmers Market will also be open from seven A M. to one P M. Come out Saturday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, nine A M. to eleven A M. This time, we're gonna have a roll call from my city clerk.
Councilmember Mays.
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Here.
Councilmember Brown Junior.
Here.
Councilmember Lockett. You have to unmute, sir.
Here, here, here.
Can you all turn that down, please?
Yeah, here.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown Senior.
Here.
Councilmember Shaner. Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Brunson.
Here.
He present?
He present. Everyone should have a copy of the minutes from the last council meeting.
Shall I move?
Second.
It is properly moved in second that we accept the minutes from the last council meeting from June eighth. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? So moved, minutes have been accepted. Next, we'll move into our committee reports, Ways and Means, Councilmember Browns, stepping in for Councilmember Mays, Brown Junior.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, Ways and Means met just before this council meeting. Uh, tonight, we have two budget adjustments. Um, the first one is for eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. It's coming from the uh, COVID, um, HHS grant. I move that we approve this budget adjustment.
It's been properly moved in second that we accept a budget adjustment in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty, sixty-eight cents and carry over from the HHS COVID. All those in favor of this budget adjustment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, those that oppose, budget adjustment approved.
Um, second budget adjustment, also from the HHS COVID grant. Um, the total budget amount is twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. I move that we approve this budget adjustment.
Second.
It is properly moved in second that we accept a budget adjustment in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars from the HHS COVID. All those in favor of this budget adjustment, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, budget adjustment approved.
Um, Mister Chair, that concludes Ways and Means.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown Junior. Next, we'll move into Ordnance and Resolutions. Councilmember Brown Junior substituting for Councilmember Mays.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, ordinances and resolutions met just before this council meeting. Um, tonight, we have uh, four ordinances and we have uh, four resolutions that are on the agenda, and we also have a, an agenda item to be added. Um, and we'll do that in just a second. Um, agenda item number one, um, it's gonna be read for the first time, and we're gonna send that to Administration Committee for, uh, for discussion. Agenda item number two, um, try to read that two times tonight and finish it up on the next meeting. Agenda item number three, we're gonna read that twice tonight and try to finish it up at our next meeting. Uh, agenda item number four, we're gonna try to finish that one tonight. Agenda items five, six, seven, and eight are all resolutions to be completed tonight. And.
Uh, Mister Chair, Mister Chair.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I'm pulling number six, uh, my, my ordinance, uh, and sending it to the Development and Planning Committee.
Yes, sir. Number six or seven?
Agenda item number six, if I'm not mistaken.
Number seven. Is that number seven?
Let me see.
Oh.
I'm not looking at it right now.
Can we ask him if he can hear if it's six or seven?
Transferring funds, twenty seventeen?
It's number seven.
Number seven. So number seven is being pulled, uh, by the sponsor. All right. I wanna, uh, move that we add a resolution authorizing the extension of an agreement with Civic Plus concerning services for website development for the Parks and Recreation Department.
I can't hear what that one was that we're adding.
Uh, it's a resolution authorizing the extension of an agreement with Civic Plus concerning services for website development for Parks and Recreation Department.
It's been, it's been properly moved in second that a resolution authorizing the extension of an agreement with Civic Plus concerning services for website development for Parks and Recreation Development. Can we get a roll call, please?
I need someone to, Clark Roberts, can you please say what they're pointing the mic to go on, cause I can't hear them.
Turn, turn it up, Saul.
It's up at Pine Bluff.
Thank you.
It's a resolution authorizing the extension of an agreement with the Civic Plus concerning services for website development for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Now, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Mays?
No.
Stops there?
Yep.
Because I just got it.
All right, well, we'll, um, consider this at the next council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so that leaves us with four ordinances and three resolutions to be considered for tonight. Uh, and that concludes ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown Junior.
Yes, sir.
Economic and Community Development, Councilmember Brown Senior.
Thank you very much, sir. There's no, there's no committee report today. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir. Public Health and Welfare, Councilmember Frazier.
Councilmember Frazier, you on for Public Health and Welfare Report?
No report.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I just want to say though that I did go to the Arc Summoners for League Conference, um, this past week, and there's some information that I really do want to get to our public and to our employees. Um, so I will work on compiling that information and hopefully getting someone down here to speak to our citizens and our employees. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Frazier. Public Works, Councilmember Shaner.
Thank you, Chair. Public Works met on June the thirteenth. Uh, we discussed resolution number six, uh, authorizing.
Councilmember Shaner, would you pull the mic to you, please?
Can you hear me? Public Works met on June the thirteenth. Uh, during that meeting, we discussed, uh, agenda item number six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program. Uh, and that was voted on with a due pass to send to the full council, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaner. Development and Planning, Councilmember Lockett.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mister Chair. Development and Planning met on the seventh of, uh, this month, and we put item number eight on the agenda with a due pass. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Lockett.
I will be announcing, uh, excuse me, uh, a upcoming Development and Planning meeting on next week. I hadn't determined the date, but by Thursday, I should have it out. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Traffic and Aviation, Councilmember Brunson.
Thank you, Councilmember Holcomb. No, I do not have a report, um, from Traffic and Aviation. We do plan some meet on next, um, next week, but I'll get with the clerk to send that information out to the council and the league and let them know when that date and time will be. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brunson. Administration Committee will hold its meeting next Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at one thirty P M. If that's suffice, it's my two committee members in person and hybrid, Councilmember Brown Senior and Councilmember Lockett.
Get clerk Roberts.
Yes, sir.
So that'll be next Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at one thirty P M. in person and hybrid.
What's the location there, Mister?
Both hyper.
We're gonna do the City Council chambers?
Yes, sir, count, City Council Chamber.
One thirty?
Yes, sir, one thirty. In the City Council chambers. That concludes my report. Public Safety, Councilmember Brown Junior.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Public Safety met on June seventh, uh, this month. Uh, we heard a report from Animal Control. Um, he stated that we needed to, um, put some more attention to our old animal control center, um, some possible remodels in the future, um, to house more animals there. Um, also, he mentioned that, um, a position that was in his department, uh, I guess budgeted for twenty twenty-two, was not budgeted for twenty twenty-three. Um, requested that that position be added back. Um, I believe the recommendation was for him to take that to Administration Committee. Um, he also mentioned, uh, about getting a backup generator, uh, for the animal control facility. Um, he presented numbers for that, and that's possible, that's for twenty twenty-four, so that's not for twenty twenty-three. So, uh, going to twenty-four budget, um, a generator for that facility, uh, he mentioned an eighty kilowatt generator. There was some question about the size of, and the capabilities of that generator. And so, um, he may go back and try to get some other, uh, quotes on that size of generator for that facility. Uh, we heard from the Fire Department. Uh, he gave his monthly report. All council members, um, have a copy of it. Uh, during the time, um, he announced about the Junior Fire Academy. It actually occurred between June twelfth and June sixteenth. Um, there was ages, uh, it was from eight to four, and we had, uh, thirteen children that were involved with it. Um, the ages were from eleven to thirteen, and Lieutenant Murray was the person that spearheaded that, uh, Junior Firefighter Academy. Um, also, uh, we discussed agenda item number seven, um, concerning the grants for radios for the Fire Department. Came out of committee with a due pass. Um, we heard from the Police Department. Um, they also gave their monthly reports. Um, and for the most part, crime is down in most categories. We also mentioned a new website, um, and adding, um, an option to pay tickets online. They also announced that the Police Bank will disown June thirtieth at the Convention Center. And you can, I believe you can get with the Police Department about tickets, uh, to that event. They also did testing for sergeants and lieutenants on May thirty-first, so they're looking forward to, uh, moving some officers up into those positions. Um, she mentioned that there are three in training at the Alita Tr- uh, Police Academy. And, um, she also mentioned two positions that are non-uniform positions, um, that, um, she'd like to be added into the budget at one point in time. So that will be another, uh, issue for Administration there. Um, for the courts, uh, Ms. Young presented a report. Uh, Amnesty Week is gonna be the second week of July. Uh, it's the tenth through the fourteenth. That's for both Districts one and Courts one and two. And let's see. And also, she mentioned, um, the fact of her salary service. And also, she mentioned, um, the fact of her salary surveys from the salary survey that we conducted a couple of years ago. Um, those, those surveys were from two thousand and eight. Um, she asked to submit those, uh, she asked to be able to update those descriptions, uh, so they can be included in our current salary survey. At the time, I recommended that she submit those salary surveys to H.R. and then present that to the Administration Committee.
Okay. And that concludes my report. Now, uh, Clerk Roberts, I'm not sure about the schedule for the first week of July. I don't know what days that City Hall will be closed, so I don't know how to schedule that meeting just yet.
We can just, uh, call me and we'll work with their schedule.
Okay, 'cause I know there's gonna be some days off in there somewhere, so. All right, so I'll get with the clerk's office about our next meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, Jr.
Councilmember Holcomb, I'm going to, um, agenda item Special Presentation. Um, this is our twenty twenty-one annual audit for open discussion. Will be moved to our next first city council meeting in the month of July.
Can you repeat that so everyone can?
We will be moving the discussion of our annual twenty twenty-one. Audit, the city audit, to our first. City council meeting in the month of July.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Clerk Roberts. Now, we'll be moving on to our proposed ordinance and resolution, Councilmember Brown, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, agenda item number one, have an ordinance amending section twenty-one dash twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Bluff, Arkansas, respecting the classification of personnel within the Police Department for related purposes and declaring an emergency.
Whereas it is desired to modify the classification of personnel within the Police Department to improve efficiency. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Palm Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, that section twenty-one, twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Bluff, Arkansas is amended to provide as follows. Classification of Personnel, there is created and established with the Police Department these positions. One Chief of Police, one Assistant Chief of Police, uh, to be appointed and serve at the discretion of Chief of Police and exempt from public service protection. Two Deputy Chiefs, four Captains, eleven Lieutenants, twenty Sergeants, and a hundred and sixteen Patrolmen. Section Two, all ordinances or parts thereof which conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section Three, the provisions of this ordinance are declared separable. If any provision is found contrary to law, the remaining provision shall continue to be given effect. Section Four, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, the clerk will cause it to be published as provided by law. Section Five, the City Council finds that updating the classification of personnel within the Police Department will advance the department's ability to provide increased public safety and deter crime in the city and should be implemented immediately as vital to the public peace, safety, and welfare. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist and this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
And we're gonna send this, uh, piece of legislation to the Administration Committee since it involves personnel changes. And then we'll bring it back at our next council meeting for second or possibly third reading.
Mr. Chair, did we change anything from the last time?
Uh.
It reads exactly the same or did, what, any, any language?
Just add the emergency clause.
Just add the emergency clause. Right, but since it's a, you know, a personnel issue and we're moving positions around, so, um, Administration Committee can address it there and bring it back.
And we're, we're addressing it in our meeting on next, next Wednesday.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
The only problem I had was being exempt from the civil service protection. I talked to Chief Richardson about that. I mean, that's, might explain that to some people.
Well, we don't have a civil service, um.
I, I understand that, but it's in there.
Right, but that was in, that was part of the original ordinance, the way it was written originally, so nothing was changed. As far as, uh, the descriptions of positions and things like that, only the number in each position changed. So, none of the other language was changed in the ordinance whatsoever. This is the ordinance, basically the same wording that's on file now, that's actually been passed by the council.
Well, I guess. You might have to explain it more to some of the citizens, I, if they won't see all this.
We're gonna discuss in the Administration Committee. It's just up for the first reading on tonight.
Okay, I understand, I understand. Right. She's taking care of the citizen.
Okay. Agenda item number two, we have an ordinance to close a portion of the East-West Alley located north of the eleven hundred block of East Harding Avenue and, and between Kentucky and Vermont Streets. Up for the first reading.
Whereas a petition was duly filed with the City of Palm Bluff, Arkansas to close the East-West Alley located north of the eleven hundred block of East Harding Avenue between Kentucky and Vermont Streets. And whereas, after proper notice as required by law, the city has heard all persons desiring to be heard on the question and has ascertained that the East-West Alley located north of the eleven hundred block of East Harding Avenue and between Kentucky and Vermont Streets and has herefore been dedicated to the public use as a public alley and that the public interest and welfare will not be adversely affected by the closing of said alley. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Palm Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, that the City of Palm Bluff, Arkansas hereby releases, vacates, and abandons all its rights together with the rights of the public generally except those specifically set forth below in and to the portion of the alley right of way designated as set forth below. Section Two, the City of Palm Bluff hereby specifically retains the rights to use the alley as a utility easement. Section Three, a copy of the ordinance duly certified by the City Clerk shall be filed in the office of the Recorder of Jefferson County and recorded in the deed of records of the county. Section Four, that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Move to suspend the rules and place this ordinance up for the second reading.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we suspend the rules and place this ordinance up for the second reading. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown, Junior?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown, Senior?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
An ordinance to close a portion of the East-West Alley located north of the eleven hundred block of East Harding Avenue and between Kentucky and Vermont Streets.
Now, before I, um, do this, Councilmember Lockett, I don't know if you were here when we talked about an ordinance and resolutions, but we said we're gonna read this two times tonight and then another time at the next meeting.
Oh, that'd be, that'd be mighty fine. I mean, uh, e- either way y'all wanna do it, you know, all parts, all, all four sides of this alley is owned by the same, you know, person and that there's nobody adverse affected. It's still, we, when it comes to alleys and some streets, they are platted, but they're not actually utilized.
Yes, sir.
But, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's fine to do it the way, read it twice and come back next meeting.
All right, we'll place it on the calendar. Agenda item number three, uh, we have an ordinance amending policy number one oh six of the Palm Bluff Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual respecting take-home vehicles and for related purposes.
Whereas current Police Department policy permits employees who reside within the city limits of Palm Bluff to, under specified criteria, take home a police unit. And whereas many police officers live in the prox- in proximity to the city limits but reside in Jefferson County. And it is desired to give the Chief of Police the discretion to allow an officer who lives in the county and otherwise meets all criteria to take home a department vehicle. And whereas it is necessary to amend department policy to effect this change. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Palm Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, that policy number one oh six in the Department, Palm Bluff Department Policy and Procedures Manual is amended as follows. In Part Two, policy change in the second paragraph to read. Also, employees who have twenty years o- of service or more with this department and live within Jefferson County, Arkansas may be authorized to take home a vehicle with consideration given to past performance and conduct. Section Two, that all ordinances are, all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section Three, this ordinance not being of a general or permanent nature, need not be published and shall take effect immediately.
Move to suspend the rules and place this ordinance up for the second reading.
Second, second.
It's been properly moved and second that this ordinance be up for a second reading. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown, Junior?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown, Senior?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Are we talking about the one to take the vehicles home?
Yes, number three.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
Can that be in the discussion right now? We just gonna wait till the next meeting?
We can, I mean, if there's any discussion.
Okay.
Discussion is up at any, at any reading.
Oh, okay.
I need to read the title again real quick. I'm gonna read the ti-
Just, just, just briefly, I.
No, yeah. Councilmember, uh, she wants to read the title real quick.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
An ordinance amending policy number one zero six of the Palm Bluff Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual respecting take-home vehicles and for related purposes.
That's the second reading. My speak, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um. So, I'm trying to understand. And I want to understand. So, part two says something different than what I get from the top. Part two says also employees have twenty years of service or more with the department and live within.
Oh, it's been, that part scratched out and then it's gonna say just, say Jefferson County.
But is it, that's saying the same thing at the top?
Uh, which, which line number?
Uh, let me think, let me find it, let's see. Okay, I get, the top is talking about just the city, right?
It says Jefferson County on line fourteen.
Right, the old language, the old language is stating that the person had to live within the City of Palm Bluff. We're trying to change it to include anywhere within Jefferson County.
I'm understanding that. We don't, we don't, we don't want one mile outside of Jefferson County, we want to be in Jefferson County. So. We'll do further discussion next, on the next meeting.
Any other discussion?
Yes, and we'll, what we'll do, uh, I thought with the chief, we'll, we'll look at it real, very closely. Uh, if anything comes up with these vehicles, we're gonna pull it. As soon as possible.
Well, uh, in the language of the, uh, ordinance here, the chief has the discretion on whether or not a take-home vehicle will be, um, permitted. So, she still has that discretion. It won't just be any officer, it would be, she will have to approve it.
Well, the City Council has the approval as well.
Well, we approved the ordinance, but she approves, who, who gets to take home cars? All right, any other discussion? We'll place this on the calendar. Uh, agenda item number four, we have an ordinance authorizing issuance of a short-term financing instrument pursuant to Amendment seventy-eight of the Arkansas Constitution for the acquisition of equipment for the Street Department and the execution of the documents needed to complete the transaction and for related purposes up for the first reading.
Whereas the City of Palm Bluff is authorized by law to purchase, acquire, and lease personal property for the benefit of the city and its re- city residents and to enter in co- into contracts respect thereto, with respect thereto. And whereas, as allowed by Amendment seventy-eight of the Arkansas Constitution and Arkansas Code annotated fourteen seventy-eight one oh one and fol- and following, the city desires to purchase certain equipment cons- constituting personal property with a useful life of more than one year for use by the Street Department as itemized in the attached purchase orders with Scott Equipment Company, LLC, John Deere Company, John Deere and Company, and Tiger Mowers. And whereas, the Street Department advertised for proposals from interested firms to provide financing for acquisition of the itemized equipment and the firm of Bank Funding LLC submitted the mo- the most qualified proposal. And whereas, the total amount financed is five hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy cent over a term of sixty months with an interest rate of four point four percent per annum. And whereas, the equipment for purchase has been secured in accordance with applicable city code and state law provisions. And whereas, the City Council finds that issuance of an amendment, Amendment seventy-eight instrument for the purchase of the equipment as described on the terms and consi- conditions set forth therein is in the best interest of the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Palm Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, that instrument authorized, there is authorized the issuance of a short-term financial in- instrument pursuant to ACA fourteen seventy-eight one oh one and following, and Amendment seventy-eight to the Constitution to Bank Funding LLC of Boyd's, Maryland, taking the form of a financing agreement note, security agreement, and other supporting documents, forms, and exhibits in the principal amount of five hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy cent to be paid over a term of sixty months in installments provided therein and on the other terms and conditions found therein. Section Two, purpose authorization to, uh, execute. The purpose of the issuance of amendment, the Amendment seventy-eight instrument in the form laid out in the transaction documents is to finance acquisition of personal property with a useful life exceeding one year. Uh, viz the equipment described in the attached purchase order forms with Scott Equipment Company, LLC, Dear, John Deere and Company, and Tiger Mowers. B, the transaction, transaction documents are approved and the mayor and city clerk authorized to execute, attest, seal, and deliver the same in any related contract note, security agreement, certificate, exhibit, or other document necessary to complete the transaction documents and the issuance of the Amendment seventy-eight instrument. Section Three, notation. The transaction document should bear a notation in the, in a conspicuous place that the transaction is made under the authority of Amendment seventy-eight of the Arkansas Constitution and a, uh, Arkansas Code annotated fourteen seventy-eight one oh one and the subsequent restrictions and other provisions set forth therein. Section Four, severability. If a section, paragraph, clause, or provision of this ordinance should for any reason be held to be invalid or unenforceable, the invalidity or unenforceability of the section, paragraph, clause, or provision shall not affect the legality of any of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section Five, an ordinance or part thereof inconsistent with this ordinance is hereby repealed to the extent of the inconsistency. Section Six, this ordinance is not of a general or permanent nature and need not be published, it will take effect upon adoption.
Move to suspend the rules and place this ordinance on the second reading.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we suspend the rules and place this ordinance on the second reading. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb, Junior?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown, Junior?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown, Senior?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
And Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing issuance of a short-term financing instrument pursuant to Amendment seventy-eight of the Arkansas Constitution for the acquisition of equipment for the Street Department and the execution of the documents needed to complete the transaction and for related purposes.
Move to suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its third and final reading.
Second.
Has it moved and properly second that this ordinance be placed on its third and final reading? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mays?
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown, Junior?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown, Senior?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaner?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson?
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing issuance of a short-term financing instrument pursuant to Amendment seventy-eight of the Arkansas Constitution for the ac- for the acquisition of equipment for the Street Department and the execution of documents needed to complete the transaction and for related purposes.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor of this ordinance, let it be known by saying.
I, I, a question.
Oh, discussion.
Councilmember Frazier?
Yes, um, um, I, okay, I have no problem with the Street Department getting this equipment. My, my question is, with the percentage and everything, we're talking about approximately nine thousand a month, uh, on this loan. Um, is that something that's already in the budget or is it something that we're gonna have to find money for? I need to know those questions.
Uh, Mr. Bennett, can you come to the podium, please?
The money, uh, for the, uh, amendment, uh, the money for the leasing is already in the budget. There'll be no, uh, requests for additional funding. We've, uh, itemized our purchases and we've indicated, I think it's over five hundred forty-one thousand dollars over a five-year period and our budgets accommodate that.
Your, your budget will take care of that.
Yes, sir.
So, so, explain Bank Funding LLC. Where is that? What, what is that?
That is a, uh, a minority business that won the, uh, RFP bid, uh, back in.
RFP, people don't. RFP, people don't know RFP.
Request for Proposal Provider Service. And they won that bid, they're a minority business out of Washington, DC.
Thank you for answering my question, I, I just wanted to make sure that we could cover the bill and where it was coming from, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Frazier.
Thanks again, guy.
Did I answer your question, Councilmember Mays?
Yes, sir.
If there's no, no other discussion, all those in favor of this ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Those that oppose, ordinance pass.
Alright, Agenda Item number five, it's a resolution authorizing acceptance of an Arkansas Public Safety Communications Grant, affirming the city's commitment to provide matching funds for the grant and for related purposes.
Whereas the Fire and Emergency Services Department has been wa- awarded an, an Arkansas Public Safety Communications Grant for the purchase of needed radio equipment. And whereas, the cost of the radio equipment is one hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-seven cent. And whereas, the grant requires the city to provide a twenty-five percent match. And whereas, the council desires to accept the grant and commit to paying the match and acquire the needed radio equipment for the Fire and Emergency Services Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Section One, that the city accepts the Arkansas Public Safety Communications Grant in the amount of one hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. Is that right?
One forty-eight, four nineteen, thirty-three.
Okay, okay, alright, I got it, okay. And thirty-three cent. And the city affirms that its commitment to pay the required twenty-five percent match, that is forty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-four cent as a condition of, for receiving the grant. Section Three, that the total funds, of the funds, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-seven cent shall be used for the acquisition of the needed radio equipment for fire and, uh, emergency prevention, fire, fire prevention and public safety purposes.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, that a resolution authorizing acceptance of an Arkansas Public Safety Com- Communication Grant affirming the city's commitment to provide matching funds for the grant and for related purposes.
I don't have a figure, but is that correct? Uh, from, are we going from one, we going from one ninety-seven eighty? Is that forty-nine, right?
The, the cost of the equipment is one hundred ninety-seven, eight, eight-five, and then the grant's gonna provide one hundred and forty-eight thousand and then the city's gonna provide forty-nine.
Okay, I get it.
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
Yes, yes, I'd like to know when this come in, is the equipment come in, right?
Yes, sir.
Can we see, let me call me, I wanna go and look at it. I really do, this is a lot of money and are, are they using this stuff?
Well, these, uh, this grant will provide for the, some radios will be the handhelds and some of those radios will be installed inside of units. So some of these will be inside of fire trucks and fire equipment, uh, fire vehicles, and then other equipment will be handhelds for the officers.
I'm just saying, we spent a lot of money and just, just, I mean, alright.
Well, it's a grant, so we're, you know, we're putting up twenty-five percent, the grant's covered seventy-five percent, so. It's a, it's more of a gift than it is anything.
But that's coming out of the taxpayers' money, not, not our part.
No, that, that, that's come from grants.
Otherwise, we would have to pay the whole one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars
I understand.
for the equipment, so.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Those that oppose, resolution pass.
Agenda Item number six, it's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program, pledging expenditure of the required matching funds, authorizing the signing of a, uh, conservation easement and related purposes.
Whereas the city has been awarded the sum of forty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars in a grant from the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program for the cost of the Pine Bluff Civic Center waterproofing removal and shrubs, trees, and soil from Planters Power Washing Building Project. And whereas, as part of the conditions to receive the grant, the city must agree to expend a cash match in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars and fifty cent and execute a conservation easement. And whereas, the project is in the best interest of the city and the mayor should be authorized to execute the grant agreement and the conservation easement and ensure the city complies with the terms and conditions thereof. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, that the city accepts the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program Grant in the amount of forty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars for the Pine Bluff Civic Center waterproofing and, uh, or removal of tru- shrubs, trees, and soil from Planters Power Wash Building Project. Section Two, that the city pledges and agrees to the cash match of twenty-three thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars and fifty cent as one of the conditions for receiving the grant funds. Section Three, the mayor is authorized and directed to execute the grant agreement and conservation easement, uh, and to take over all of the necessary steps to ensure the city's compliance with the agreement and the conditions of the grant.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second, second, that a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement with the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program pledging expenditure of required matching funds, authorizing the signing of a conservation easement and related purposes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of this? Councilmember Frazier?
Oh, I, I was just saying, um, this was a long time coming, we need to definitely, uh, handle this and, and accept this grant because, uh, it's causing a lot of issues in our foundation at, at the City Hall, so I'm grateful that we got this grant.
I think everyone agrees with you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those that oppose, resolution pass.
Agenda Item number seven, it's been pulled by the sponsor, so we'll go to Agenda Item number eight. It's a resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, and/or structures as nuisances and ordering their abatement.
Whereas the City Council-
Move for adoption? Second.
A resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, or structures as nuisance and ordering for their abatement. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, so move.
That concludes the agenda for tonight, I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we be adjourned, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned, we have no speakers for non-agenda items. And just wanna remind you that, of the announcement that was given at the beginning of the meeting, that's the City of Pine Bluff Step Into Summer Walking Challenge. That will be this Saturday, June twenty-fourth, from nine AM to eleven AM. And we just wanna keep our mayor in prayer in her absence, and she's getting some rest and relaxation. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Something else is happening on the twenty-fourth, this month or next month? It's a fishing derby or something.
Fishing derby.
It's, is it in July or Ju- or Ju-
Usually it's in August, isn't it?
It's when? Who's, who, who's giving that?
Liberty.
Liberty.
Liberty Utilities. Alright, with all that being said, we dismiss.